I'd like to call this February 7, 2022, this meeting to order. I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice,
please remain standing for a moment of silence for our veterans, our first responders, individuals and families in need. Sit down, please. First of all, we got a rubber comment meeting, a regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 7, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Workshop media scheduled for Monday, March 28, 2002 at 7:00 PM. Our first item will be a public hearing at 7:05. We have about three minutes to go on that. I don't think it's worth jumping to another item. Maybe just, you know, wait a minute here for that. Unless the, uh, the fire department, I think he has a fairly small. Would you like to go, Jeremy? Okay, we won't do the fire department. We'll wait on that. We will do, uh, we will just wait. You got about two minutes.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm here. If you want to go ahead and do the fire department.
Okay, uh, so I'll go ahead, Jeremy. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so I only have one item on the agenda for tonight, and then I have some, uh, response tests for the calendar year of January 1st through December 31st of 2021. Um, the motion and the permission I'm seeking is to send the new truck to the Long Island Fire Expo. Uh, this was requested by Seagrave and the Hudson Valley Fire Equipment Dealer.
Okay, uh, Jeremy spoke to me a little bit about it. Uh, sometimes you get a new truck, you actually get a little pride and you get to, you know, go get to show it to us too. And as a fireman, they, well, I'm a fireman, I have a lot of pride around here and all firefighters too. But they want to know if they can take the, the rig, the fire engine, call it a rig. Uh, it's going to be getting work that week also. Am I correct in saying that, Jeremy? They're going to do some warranty work.
So there's going to be some warranty work. They're going to drop it off tomorrow at the dealer for some warranty work. And then from there, the dealer will have the truck detailed. Uh, they will transport it to the show. And then they will transport it back to us following the show on Sunday evening.
And, and our firefighters also get to go into that show as a complimentary thing because we do something of this nature. So I mean, I, I believe in this. I believe it's good for the pride. I believe we're getting work done in fire range. And so if I can, if I can have a motion to approve.
Motion, trustee Albert.
I think it's all of us said it.
Okay.
Trustee Albert, uh, is a motion seconded by trustee Corrigan.
Mayor.
Uh, can I get any discussion?
Mayor, it's Terry.
Yes, Terry.
Yeah, the only thing I had sent out, I, I just got on a minute ago. Um, I thought that they should name the village, there's no name insured.
Do you think we could do that? They could, they would make us additional insurance, Jeremy?
Yeah, I will contact them. Actually, I'll call the, uh, the gentleman right after I get off of this and see if they can provide us such insurance.
Okay, very good. So we'll make it subject to. That's all. Okay. That's fair, Jeremy. Okay. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, again, motion approved. Have a good time, guys. Anything else, Jeremy?
Yep. So I just want to go over the, uh, department stats for the year 2021. I believe it's been a couple of years since we did this. So I was able to get with, uh, ex-chief McInerney, who does our LoSat program and pull some numbers for you guys. Uh, total number of incidents last year was 321. Almost 321 calls. We had a total, uh, members responding of 6,477 with a total of 6,364.95 hours. Uh, and we averaged 21 members per call, which in seating positions roughly four or five guys to per truck, which is roughly four or five trucks per call that responded. Wow. And our average response time was five minutes and six seconds. That's from paging to on scene, which is actually 54 seconds below the NFPA standard. So we did exceed that. Um, as far as training goes, hold on one second. All right. So Monday night training, which is our normal training, uh, we had a total of 1,765 attendees for a total of 4,008 hours. Uh, just to come comparison to 2020, which was the COVID year, uh, we were down a little bit to 1,705. And the hours were about the same. And in 2019, there was obviously more. We were at 1,917 members and 4,774 hours. Um, the one thing that we actually did that I want to bring to the village's attention is for training at the Rockland County Fire Training Center. In the year 2018, oh, excuse me, 2019, aside from the, the standard firefighter one training, we had 39 members attend courses for a total of 604 hours. In 2020, we only had six attendees for a total of 35 hours. And in 2021, we had one attendee for 24 hours. And that is reflective of the ability or the inability to train there currently at this time. I know they're working on some projects to get some stuff done. But that extra training money is, helps us out a lot with getting people trained to do the job proficiently. Um, last year, we put seven new members through firefighter one. The, the prior year before that, the COVID year was two, and then the year before that, which was just a normal year was four. So we are up a little bit. We are getting new members and we are getting them trained. And that's all I have.
Very good, Chief. Appreciate your floor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Thanks for keeping us safe. Anytime.
I'm gonna go back now to the public hearing. The, uh, so I'd like to make a motion to open up the public hearing to the 108 Washington Avenue, the, the Cola property. Can I take it a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
We all did it again. I know.
Melissa will figure out who said what. Okay, we'll watch. Go back to the videotape. We'll go back to the video.
Poor Melissa. Poor Melissa.
Another problem. Okay, and they have to, we have to look at all the video now. Second, all right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? Okay. I guess Mr. Magrino, I guess you'll be talking about this or Mr. Wright?
Uh, yes. Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, so this was, has been on several times before the board. This, uh, applicant wishes to do a, a home occupation, uh, in an existing residence. It's in a 2R5 zone. Um, they have been before the planning board. The planning board, um, recommended proceeding with this. Uh, they do not, uh, recommend uh, going through the, uh, whole site plan procedure. Um, this is basically taking an existing house. And, um, as I said, uh, the, the woman, uh, the applicant, Ms. Okala, uh, indicated that her son was going to be doing a, um, uh, I believe it was a computer type business. Um, but, uh, they must meet all the requirements of, uh, 26633I for, uh, home occupation and the applicant or the application, um, you know, does that. So, uh, again, they were before the board. I'm not sure if they're on tonight, but, um, if they're here, they can certainly speak. And if not, uh, you know, we can hear from the public and the board, of course.
Is they actually came to the meeting?
This was put over because, uh, they didn't have the appropriate environmental assessment form, which has been provided and, and which is sufficient. The use apparently has been ongoing for some period of time and has had no detrimental impacts on the neighborhood.
Any, is there any public comment in reference to this?
Uh, the public should be advised to raise their hand. Usually Mike, uh, you, you tell them what button they can hit to do that.
Yes, if you're, uh, calling in from the phone, it's a star nine. If it's anything else like with the app, either on your computer or on your smartphone, you'll see the little icon to raise your hand. And once you raise your hand, we'll know to be able to call on you.
Anything, uh, appears there's no comment. So being there's no comments, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion, Corrigan. Frank and I seem to be on the same
Corrigan, seconded by Hagan.
Okay. All right, Frank, I'm going to do the three, I'm going to do a three second delay.
Okay.
Doing references on football. So that way, you know, we're okay.
Okay.
I'll do one, two, three.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? All in motion. Um, I guess now we could go ahead and make the, uh, make a motion to, to allow the, uh, you, you want to read the, the motion, uh, Mr. Magrino's, okay?
Yes, I prepared the resolution. Um,
Rob, do you have in that, uh, adopting a neck deck or do you want a separate, uh, motion for that?
Uh, I guess we could do a separate motion for the neck deck because I did put in, uh, it was a type two because it's a special permit, but we could do the negative declaration. Um, so at first, before we do the special permit, I'd ask, uh, for, uh, the board to, um, uh, make a motion, um, to, uh, issue a negative declaration pursuant to, uh, Secra.
Go ahead, Joe.
Oh, it's my turn. I motion.
One, two.
Your second, please.
Second.
Second by Fred Sovereign. The sky.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to have clarification what that means, you know, the, this negative declaration.
Firstly, any land use application, uh, that comes before any of the village boards, although there are some exceptions, are subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. So one of the things that came up was that they hadn't provided an environmental assessment form that was appropriate for the application. So by adopting a negative declaration, uh, you're merely determining that the proposal won't have a significant impact on the environment.
I see. Okay, great. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Okay. And then the motion, uh, I'll, I'll run through it, um, verbatim, but whereas Silvana Akola, the only property located 108 Washington Avenue has applied for a special permit for home occupation, which is authorized pursuant to 26633I of the Suffolk Village Code. Whereas the applicant has appeared before the village board and planning board. Um, and has indicated that, uh, the area to be used for the home occupation, occupation consists of a reception room that is 10 feet wide by 12 feet long. The office measuring 10 foot, 10 feet wide and 12 feet long, sorry, 10 foot point four wide and 12 point five long. With a separate entrance in the parking area, 20 feet wide, 125 feet in length. Whereas matters referred to the village planning board, which waived the necessity for site plan review, made recommendations and comments that are incorporated by reference herein. Uh, whereas the village board has issued a negative declaration. Uh, and whereas the board has reviewed the comments of the Rockland County playing department, uh, recommending modifications. And the board having determined, uh, to vote to override conditions one, two, and four. Uh, as being unnecessary for, among other reasons, property had been authorized for use as a home occupation in the past. Uh, hence not created any issues. The applicant has provided sufficient detailed descriptions and photographs such that a formal site plan is unnecessary. And the applicant will be required to adhere to the requirements of 26633I. Now therefore be resolved, those board finds that the applicant has provided sufficient information to grant a special permit. Be further resolved, special term be authorized for a period of two years, at which time the applicant may return to renew the special permit. Uh, which shall consider and the board shall consider the extent to which the applicant adhered to the requirements of the special permit. Uh, so if, uh, the board is inclined to ask for somebody to make, um, a motion to, uh, adopt that resolution.
Motion, trustee Albert.
Motion by trustee Albert.
Second.
Second by trustee Sovereign. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Move that, that, let's say Colas, if you're listening, that, 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 that went through. It's all passed. You can, I know you've had it for many years already. So go ahead and enjoy your property and take care of it. You always have your property anyway. Um, I guess we, uh, fire department attorney, they're done with the attorney now. I guess I go to, we're going to, uh, with the XL communications. We're going to adjourn that to, uh, March 7th. That would be the Avon project. We're still, we're, they're still supplying us paperwork. So it, so we can actually have a public hearing and we're, we'll be meeting with them and talking about them more. Okay. Um, their original application wasn't sufficient. And, uh, as that goes on, I, I don't want to just take it totally off. I want to leave it, as you might say, in play. Even though we're working on a comprehensive plan, I'm leaving it there. And, uh, I'm not, because I don't want to stunt, uh, sufferance any progress or any, any, uh, uh, you know, ways to get more taxation for us, right? So ratable. So, uh, we're keeping open. We just want to do it responsibly. And what's best for the community and that's for the whole village as a whole, everyone here.
Mayor, I discussed it with their attorney today. So he, he understands where we are.
Very good. Very good, Charlie. Uh, I guess we'll move to police department. Chief.
You need a motion to adjourn it.
I'm sorry. I have a motion.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
A second.
To, to March 7th, the XL communications.
Well, the motion was made and I'll second it.
I'd second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Well, that's moved to March 7th. The, uh, police department chief Lockwood, please.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, in the month of January, we respond, we responded to 790 calls for service. Uh, one particular incident that I wanted to make the board aware of is regards to a sex offender that was residing within the village. Um, as I'm sure the board is aware, we had a level three sex offender, which is the highest designation reserve for offenders most likely to reoffend residing in the village on Parkside Avenue. On February 2nd, our department, along with the Department of Homeland Security's Investigation Division, conducted a search warrant on the offender's location, uh, and ultimately arrested and charged him with, uh, one count of distributing child exploitation material and one count of possessing such materials. Um, he was subsequently arraigned and turned over to the U.S. Marshal Service, where he remains in federal custody. Um, I just wanted to commend the Detective Bureau and thank the Department of Homeland Security for their assistance and their thorough investigation on the job well done, uh, removing this offender from the community.
And Andy, I live on Parkside Drive and I'm part of the Stonegate community and we all thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, on a lighter note, um, I'd like to make the board aware of a, a selfless gesture that one of our, made by one of our officers. Um, some of you, you may have already seen it. It was posted on our Facebook page. Uh, earlier this month, police officer Daniel Wynn donated stem cells as part of the Be The Match National Marrow Donation Program. Uh, Be The Match Registry for bone, is for bone marrow and stem cell donation, which helps combat life threatening blood cancers like leukemia and lymphoma. Officer Wynn became, first became aware of the program in 2016 when he was a recruit in the NYPD Academy. Um, when we asked him about the process, he basically said that a few days of discomfort for him allowed, you know, allowed him to, um, help someone else and extend their life or, or help them in their fight against cancer. Uh, maybe the, maybe giving them more time with their family or adding some more memories. Um, so I just wanted to make the board aware of that. I can't express how proud we are of the police department of Danny for his donation. And I felt the board should be aware of that incident.
That is absolutely amazing and wonderful.
Yeah, we're very
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very proud of him for that.
Yeah.
Um, the only item I have on the agenda for tonight is a request for the board to declare our old dash cam video camera system as surplus. This system was used prior to the last system that we utilized. So it's quite old and antiquated. Um, the equipment hasn't been used by our department for many years and it's well past its, uh, serviceable life. So, um, at this time, I'm just requesting that the board declare it surplus.
I have a motion to approve to make the dash cam system surplus.
I so move.
I second.
Second, Joe Corrigan. Discussion?
Um, I'm just curious, is this something that will even have value on the secondary market or is it literally just going to get junked?
So we do have it listed on GovDeals, but I would find it highly unlikely that we're going to find anybody, um, that's interested in it. It would, it would almost be like trying to sell somebody a floppy disk at this point. We're going to try.
Or VCR. Is it equivalent also to a VCR?
Pretty much, pretty much. It's the generation right after, it's the generation right after VCR tapes. So that'll tell you how old it is.
I see.
It can go along with my, uh, my Walkman.
And your eight track players.
Yes.
Some of them are quite valuable.
If you have a TPS, if you have a TPSL2 in good condition, you can get over a thousand dollars for that one.
I have no idea what the heck it is.
I, I actually have one, but it's, mine's not in good condition. So it's worthless, but in pristine condition, you know? Some of those old Walkman, like the first generation are very valuable.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I guess, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. You can make those big bucks for that.
Okay.
Will do. All right. Thank you.
Go get them, chief.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Stay safe.
At this point, I'd like to open up the, make a motion to open up the public participation at this time. Um, you don't see it on the agenda. Uh, it's my fault. Uh, I take away my hat. So, uh, I open up now. Can I have a, uh, motion open up the public participation?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Second, please.
Second.
And trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Um, at this time, we would like the public, if they have anything to discuss on any issue, feel free to say what you'd like to say or answer this question. We may know the answers. We may come back to you later on. But, uh, um, I guess yeah.
Yeah, raise your hand by either using the app on your, uh, smartphone or on your computer or tablet. Or if you have a regular telephone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine.
Right. Thank you.
And for the benefit, I'm just going to add, and in case anybody, uh, for some reason doesn't have that showing, like I know I don't for some reason, but it might be because I'm one of the hosts, uh, they can also chat. And we'll try and, uh, put them on that way.
Or you can call my phone number here, 845-357-2974. I'll answer it right here and put you on speakerphone. 845-357-2974. I just hope my ex-wife doesn't call me. She's been looking for me for a while.
Yes, there's nobody.
Okay. I'll give you another minute. Okay, being nine, can I have a motion to close the pub, to close the public participation, please?
I move to the close.
Brett Sovereign moved to close. Joe Corrigan is, is the second.
Frank, Frank did it. Frank did it.
Okay, I'm sorry, you guys.
My second.
I love this love fest. That's what I love about it. So, um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, we're going to want to, uh, culture recreation, uh, Kathy Mills, can you give us a report, please? Kathy, you.
Ms. Kathy.
Are you muted?
Yeah, she's muted.
She is muted. Oh, she's unmuted.
She's not. She's not. Give her a second, guys. She's coming. She's coming.
Tell me that video. It's saying that the host has stopped my video. So I love that.
I had that issue too.
I, I don't mind not going on camera. If you don't mind not seeing me, I'm good with it.
I miss you.
Sorry, Fred. I missed you.
It's okay.
Mayor, do you want me just to speak?
Yeah, just go ahead.
So good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you again. Uh, we have a couple of things that we're currently on right now. Uh, we are doing Zoom classes Monday through Friday at 10:00 AM. We have chair exercise and chair yoga at 10:00 AM during the week. Uh, we have our Facebook updates and constant contact email blasts. Uh, we have on February 20th, the fire department will be using the community center. And then we have a fun thing coming up. We're going to be using Zoom to do a family trivia night. And we are following up that from the bingo night that we did on Zoom. It was a great success. People really enjoyed it. They had a great time. So we're going to follow up this month with trivia night. Uh, we're coming up with some good ideas on trivia. So if any of the board would like to add trivia questions or trivia ideas, please email them to me and we'll make sure we include them in the trivia contest. But that again will be February 17th at 6:30. Uh, and I'm just following up. We had a wonderful, wonderful weekend on Saturday with the Suffolk Winter Festival fundraiser. It was a fabulous day for the community. We really were thrilled with seeing so many people come out to support the businesses in Suffolk. And I know, Mayor, you're going to talk more about it. So I'm just going to say I'm extremely pleased about Saturday.
You can keep talking about it. I just, you can go ahead and tell them about the pony ride, tell them about everything.
So the, the community center shined on Saturday. We had inside, we had tricky tray galore. We had the band Mighty Spectrum. We had volunteers that were helping out. We had happy kids, happy families. Uh, outside, we had even happier kids because we had ponies. And Joe, thank you so much for being our pony. Uh, you, you know, taking care of that whole station. It was fabulous. Uh, we had jumpy castles, which we had donated by the Mawa Elks. They gave those to us. We had a wonderful Cub Scout troop who was doing the Arsemore Station. They volunteered their afternoon and helped people come up and do some mores. So people had a fabulous time outside. Uh, again, I can't thank the volunteers, the helpers, everyone that came to help out. Uh, the Vincent Crotty Memorial Foundation was one of our sponsors. Um, and it was just such an amazing day for us to be with the community, with the community's help. And we're so proud to have really showed up on Suffolk on Saturday. So thank you to everybody. There's, there's a ton of people to thank. We will be sending out emails. We will be sending out, we have been so far. We'll be sending out letters to thank everyone that contributed. Um, so many businesses in the village wanted to be part of this. So we are just thrilled with the, uh, feedback that we got from everybody. Um, again, it was just such a tremendous success. So we're thrilled that we could be part of the community, a community event such as this for a good cause. So I think that's all I have about that for now. But again, I know most of you were there. You have any comments on it? It really was a wonderful day.
It was absolutely a fantastic day. I, I, I just, it, it, it wasn't even as cold as it said it was going to be.
Yep.
Sure. The way you were dressed, you were ready to go to the mountains.
Frank, my father always taught me overdress. There's only so many layers you can take off in public. And I, poor Kathy, I dragged her over to look at the ponies because they actually have two white ponies as well, but they all have to travel together because they all travel together. And they have their manes and their tails painted in rainbow colors.
Yep.
Or a unicorn. Or a unicorn. You know what I want next, right?
So we saw unicorns on Saturday.
Yes, so I, I just, I thought the event was put together so wonderfully, it was just so great to see everybody. That Tricky Tray was amazing, absolutely amazing. What this village came together and did was just, and what everybody did, it was just absolutely a very shining mo- moment, Kathy, you put it perfectly, it was a shining moment.
It really was, thank you, it was wonderful to see the, the gazebo area, the, the park, just, just so wonderful, it really was. It was a great, great afternoon, great morning, and we couldn't have done this without DPW, with the police, without the police, the fire, the different departments, I mean, everybody worked together so well in accomplishing the switch, as you know, we switched from the fields and because of the, that cold weather that we had, we switched it up to, uh, the park, and it turned out wonderful, it really was just wonderful. Um, recreation, I can't thank enough, Elaine and Nancy really pulled together, went to the businesses, asked for donations, restaurants, like I said, shops, and people were so giving and so kind to us that the Tricky Tray baskets became what they were because people were just so generous to it, so it was, it was really great. So.
Yeah, they did, and didn't the idea come from Mayor Curly?
Yeah.
For the winter festival, absolutely.
But thank you, Mayor Curly.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, I agree.
We all worked on it together, let's be honest with, okay, so, uh, I just wanna mention this one, we had, I had a young, a young lady there, she was a, her name was Maureen Henley, she was my young photographer today. Eighth grade, doing educational hours, like a class, I just called the Henley, Henley girl, oh girl, that's her last name. Just a good, good people, you know what I mean? I always wanna give special recognition to Gene and Pete Karate, and with the Karate Foundation, because they, they came through when I, you know, we needed help to go, you know, do the, do the funding and do, use, need a foundation to help us pull this off, and, and Liz and, Liz and Vinnie, they're big in that, uh, in that foundation with them. Also, Don Brennan with Recon Construction was a, right after we did it, came out with a nice generous donation. As many people did, I can't name them all right now, but I have a list here of, of fifty, sixty, so at least that many, so we're gonna send thank yous to them, I'll mention another point, but it was a, a lot of people came together and we, we as a team, you know, we, you know, have to pay him for certain things, we raised over, over nine thousand dollars that we can give to these businesses, okay? At the same time, we did it with a community, and that's, that's where my whole theory for this village is, a community coming together. And there was, there was a Suffolk Women's Club there, it was just different organizations and I, I thanked them and I respect them for, for helping us, all right? And American Legion, we had the Burns Brothers, Richard, on the grill, isn't it? And when one brother came in, it was like an icicle coming in, so, um, all these different, the Cub Scouts, so it, 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 the list is pretty, pretty good, and this will be a, an annual thing where we decide who we're going to help out that year, whether it's, uh, you know, breast cancer, you know, the Cancer Society, whatever it would be, Alzheimer's, let, that, that'd be something as a board will decide, okay, but, um, I, it's only gonna get bigger and better with a community working together, huh? Thank you.
Thank you.
The last thing that I wanted to mention is, uh, as, as we discussed in the workshop, the pool requires certification called Pool Operator Trainer. Um, and that certification is up this summer, so I would like permission to attend the training on March twenty second and twenty third in Somerset, New Jersey. Uh, the cost for the certification is three hundred and fifty dollars, and that would be a two-day course that I would go to. Um, come home that evening and, uh, go back again the next morning, so it's a two-day class, it takes a, uh, a test at the last part of the day, and then I become certified. I'm gonna say confidently, I will be certified.
Of course you will.
So again, that's up this, uh, this, it's up this year, so we do need to recertify, and I believe the mayor, uh, will be going as well.
Something happened or Kathy moved away or something, we have someone else on. Keep that pool safe, all right, which I don't, because he's enjoying my company too much.
Of course I am, Mayor, of course.
Yeah, so can I have a, I have a motion?
Motion, Corrigan.
Second, Frank Hagan, I think, okay, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. I guess you, you're done, Kathy, I guess we're going now to, uh, Charles, Department of Public Works, sir?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Charles, you on the line?
Where is he? I see him on a phone, he needs to be unmuted, I think.
Where is he?
He, he has been asked to unmute himself.
He's gotta unmute.
Yeah, Charles, if you're there, you can unmute yourself.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, a little bit of an issue there, good evening, board. Yeah, uh, the, um, first item is authorizing payment of application number five, and that should be corrected, not number four, number five, to Pingar and Deutsch Consulting Engineers for the backup power for a critical facilities project in the amount of four thousand two hundred and eighty dollars.
We talked about this in the, do, do, okay, okay, can I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Al, motion, can I have a second? Trustee Solomon this time.
Okay.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passed, hey, Charles?
Okay, tha- thank you, next item, authorizing payment of application number five to Pingar and Deutsch Consulting Engineers for the hardening of water treatment plant project in the amount of one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars.
Can I have a motion to approve?
I so move.
Trustee Solomon, can I get a second? Trustee Hagan, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, so, so both of those are number five then, is that correct, Mr. Suiki?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
You do the next one, Charles?
Okay, thank you. Authorization to appoint Anello Vacciano to a grade twelve MEO two position with a salary of thirty dollars and seventy-eight cents per hour.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, second is trustee Hagan.
Okay.
Any discussion, this is, just so I can say, discussion, this was one that we actually did last month, but then we realized that it wasn't.
Right.
It wasn't put out there for bid, we, we did it, it was since put out for bid, and no one else put in for it, so it's the same. We're, we're just approving exactly what we did before, just making sure we were leaked, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item, authorizing, uh, authorization to appoint Michael Stewart to a grade ten MEO one position with a salary of twenty-two dollars and ninety-three cents per hour.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Justin trustee Albert, second, second?
Second.
Second, trustee Hagan? Discussion, uh, if not, I'll just say, this is, we're, we're appointing him because he's taking the position that, uh, that Mr. Vecchio had, that he's taking that position, is that correct, Charles?
Yes, that's correct.
That's right, thank you, uh, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Not opposed, motion carries, all right, Charles, next one?
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item would be, um, to amend the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two water fund budget for the pump replacement, pump number one replacement.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Corrigan, second? So, discussion?
Yeah, so.
Do a second in, Solomon, do a second.
Yeah. So for the discussion, uh, I just wanted to inquire, it's you're amending the water fund budget for the pump replacement, is that, was there an amount in there and this changed the amount, or can, can we have some clarification on, on the amendment?
Michael Janito, treasurer here, um, no, there was, uh, the money was not in the budget, was not anticipated that this would be required, but there was money in the contingent fund, and whatever, we have to use that, we, uh, have a amendment to the budget.
Great, okay, I just wanted to know what, whether it was an under budget or whether it was just, so it was not budgeted in the first place, okay, got it.
So, it's, in that sense, it was an emergency repair, the forty thousand dollars, and we had two hundred thousand in contingency there.
Yeah.
Correct, Mr. Janito?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
We have to take the vote on that.
I know, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Okay, okay, thank you. Authorizing, uh, mayor to execute a contract with William Startoff Company for the removal and replacement of turbine pump for well number one in the amount of forty thousand three hundred and ninety-six de- dollars.
Can I have a motion to approve?
I so move.
All right, I'll second.
Discussion? That is the forty thousand, that's the replacement of the thing we just amended the budget for, okay?
I see.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much.
You weren't as good, you weren't as, uh, you didn't have as much tonight, so that was good for you.
Thank you, Charles.
Uh, okay, Mr. Janito, wanna go ahead, sir, treasurer?
Uh, yes, Mayor, uh, first up, we have, uh, Donna Lee Burrard from Burrard and Associates, they're, uh, they are the village auditors. Uh, they completed the audit for fiscal year ending, uh, ended May thirty-one of twenty twenty-one. And she's just going to be, give a very high level overview, the board, as you know, has received a copy of the, uh, annual audited financial reports, they've been filed with the State Comptroller's Office, and also with the, uh, municipal securities rulemaking board. So we've publicized it, and then after tonight's meeting, we'll publish it on the website for the village. So, uh, Donna Lee Burrard, if you're, I believe you are with us, if you.
I am with you, yeah.
Okay, there you go.
I am here, I want to, uh, I'd like to just share my screen. I'll make sure I get the right screen here, um, this is the, you should all be seeing the review of the May twenty twenty-one external audit. Okay, great, so this, uh, this is a quick, a top side summary, that audit report was a hundred and four pages. And, um, it was reviewed by management, as Michael said. Uh, I wanted to say that we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is what you would want, with, with the quote-unquote clean opinion for the, those financial statements, also wanted to take the opportunity to thank the business office and all the, uh, accountants and staff that we worked with, everybody was very cooperative, and it, it went very smoothly, and I wanna thank them all for that. Um, the major, uh, highlights here, I'm, we'll look a little more in details of some of these, but the uh, good news is the general fund, after its transfers to the debt and capital funds, had a gain of one million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars this year. That brings your unassigned fund balance up to four million six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. The water fund also had a gain after transfers of about a half a million dollars, bringing the water fund balance up to a million five hundred twenty thousand. The sewer fund had a gain also of two hundred and eleven thousand, bringing the fund balance to twenty-nine thousand, which actually made it positive this year, which is great, so all your funds now have a positive fund balance, which is, uh, wonderful news. Just in summary, the debt that happened this year, you did have a new ban for one point one, uh, million, that was for the fire truck, police car, the boiler, and so capacity, uh, uh, stuff, that, that was great, you got that at a point five, five percent less than, uh, less than one percent rate. Uh, you also issued another, uh, six hundred thousand dollar bond that went at two point four percent, and you paid off debt of one point two million dollars. Uh, just on a big top side, you know, the, the whole, uh, one of the reasons the report is so large at a hundred pages is your, your financials are actually presented in two, uh, two presentations. One is the full, uh, Gatsby position, which is what the sheet looks here, which is really not what you're mostly interested in. You're more interested in the fund type statements, which reflect the way your budget was presented to the public. The, this Gatsby, uh, report, I'm only showing you this because what this report does is it shows you all your assets and liabilities that you owe, as if you almost were closing down tomorrow, and how much would you need to pay all your obligations? So it shows us in here, it shows us your assets of some cash receivables, and, uh, your capital assets of about sixteen million in capital assets, for total assets of about twenty-nine million. You have liabilities that amount to some payables, your bond and, and debts are at nine point two million dollars. You have some pension debt of three point three million, your low SEP plan is almost short of four million. And this OPEV is the one that's really the worst one here, this is all your health insurance, uh, costs that you pay for all your retirees. If you had to, if you had to present value that, what you would need to fund, it would be about fifty-three million dollars. So obviously, this is gonna show a big negative fund balance here of thirty-nine million, after we look at the, back out the capital assets of about sixty-one million negative. This is really not the basis that we're concerned with, I'm just hitting it quickly because it is in the statements and you need to understand what it was. It also does give you a, a quick top side picture of the liabilities that the, uh, village has. More importantly, if I get the right page, this is the, this is your general fund. And your general fund for the year had this positive one point seven million dollars this year. Actually had two back-to-back good years, you had a million four sixty-five the year before. The, uh, revenues, your revenues came out at sixteen million three hundred and ninety thousand. You would actually final budget about sixteen million, you were four hundred thousand better than you had budgeted. And a lot of that has to do with, uh, increased mortgage sales tax and your, uh, in- interest was higher than budgeted. Your total expenses for the year came in at thirteen million seven hundred and sixty-two thousand. That's actually below the fifteen million you had budgeted by about one point six million dollars, uh, less in expenditures. One of the biggest costs of that is, um, the health insurance that year particular, came in with a, a zero increase, yet actually budgeted for what we consider a normal increase, and that actually saved you, according to budget, about four hundred and forty thousand. And also your street and snow maintenance was below, as well as it was some COVID-related savings, and some of the programs and things you were unable to, to do due to COVID. So your revenue was up four hundred thousand, you saved a million four, a million five in expenditures. You're about two million above budget, we had projected, um, about a two point six, um, uh, actually, projected about a six hundred thousand dollar gain, came in at two million six. Off of that, you did have to spend and pay down some debt and transfers over to the Capital Project Fund, which brings us down to the million seven. Any questions here? So, it's a good year.
You mentioned, one second, please, you mentioned about the health insurance being down, but there was no increase on it, okay? Is, is, is it fair to say that there's going to be an increase this year?
Uh, I can answer that question, Mayor, if I may, um, yes, there will be an increase this year, and as a matter of fact, our health insurance costs. health insurance costs run from January through December. Uh, this January, we have a twelve point five percent increase this year. And of course you can anticipate what it might be next year. Normally the, uh, health insurance is averages around eight percent a year. We were kind of shocked when we were told that there would be no increase, uh, the following, you know, last year. Uh, but nonetheless, it, uh, that's what happened. And I guess we're kind of making up for it this year.
So it's, it's, it's coming right, yeah, right. They're getting us now. They, they tricked us for a year. That's all.
I wouldn't call it a trick, but yeah, we pay more.
So, um, having said that, you know, when we do budgeting and whatnot, um, last, last year's uh, money, the surplus that was created because the, the cost was less than expected, went into our fund balance. But we very rarely, uh, use the fund balance for any, anything. So, so like this year.
Yeah, I think Donna Lee will touch on that too. I mean, the fund balance sounds like it's a, it, first of all, it is a healthy fund balance, but in terms of the percentage of fund balance to expenditures that are typically expected um, for a municipality like ourselves that has a decent fund, uh, decent credit rating uh, is not excessive, uh, if you want to touch on that, Donna Lee.
Yeah, um, this, the fund balances for this year, you have a, a total fund balance here of about nine million dollars. But of that nine million, we know that the a million, nine is, uh, reserved for advanced to the sewer fund. There's some restricted funds that are, are here for the, uh, law enforcement, the day of the fire insurance, uh, award program, some compensated absences, as well as you have committed some monies to Suffering Day and the nine eleven memorial. And then you also approved two hundred thousand to balance the current year's budget. So really you're unassigned, although this looks like nine million, there's really only four million, six hundred thousand left here. Um, again, that looks, may look like a lot, but it really isn't. That runs around four months worth of expenses. So that's not, uh, you know, that's not a, a whole lot of reserve when you look at it in that comparison. Uh, you know, you do want to keep a positive balance here for your bond rating, to keep your positive bond rating going. As well as, you know, this is accumulated, you know, you would want to accumulate this money, not for operations, but more for things that if you did for things that capital projects or other type of one-time things. It's really what you would want to, uh, accumulate that unassigned. Anything extra you want to add there, Mike?
No, other than the fact that, uh, just what you were touching on there is that the only time you want to use that fund balance is not to balance an operating budget, but rather to finance something that you otherwise would have financed from debt. And once again, once that level is, um, at a comfortable level that you could actually use some of it. But that's what, when a rating analyst is going to look at, at, or the state, for instance, anybody that looks at how you're using your fund balance, that's one of the things that they would ask is, are you using that to balance an operating budget? Because if you are, you have to pull the same trick next year. You have to have the same values out there. So, um, but you're absolutely right. And I, and I believe that it's now at a, at a, a good level for our credit rating, which everybody knows is a double A three, um, which is very good. Um, and we, we could look at a future data using it. Right now we do have ARPA funds we can use and, uh, other money for capital items. So, uh, we'll leave it at that. In any, in any, uh, state, it's, it's a good balance, but I wouldn't say excessive.
Making simple terms, because I made it simple, simple terms, Mike, it would be, you'd be actually uh, paying for, if, if you use the fund balance, you'd be paying for your operating budget, which you're saving. So as time goes on, you wouldn't have any savings left. Is that fair?
That is correct. That is correct.
Exactly right.
Trying to keep it simple for me. I apologize.
I'm with you, maybe.
Just to give you a flavor for how your, um, it, your revenue and expenses come from. Your revenues here, we have this little pie chart. You see that fifty-eight percent of your revenue comes from your taxes. Uh, about one percent coming from state and federal aid, eight percent for miscellaneous revenue, thirty-one percent from charges for services and two percent for grants. On the expense side, as we can see here, the largest of, of your expenses is the red bucket here for public safety at forty-three percent. You have general government obligations of about nine. Your interest, uh, runs around two percent. Home and community, twenty-seven percent. Cultural and recreation, two percent and transportation at seventeen percent. Just a quick summary of the water fund. Your water fund here, you actually came in at a five hundred thousand dollar, um, uh, gain. You had actually budgeted break even. So you came in a half a million better than, than you had anticipated. That's mostly, mostly due to some expense savings in here that you were able to generate. Uh, that brings you up to a reserve of about one point five million on that. The sewer fund, the sewer fund actually came in at two hundred and eleven gain. You had projected a, a small loss. And again, that came in better than we anticipated, although revenue was down. Your, uh, your sewer expenses were actually down by four hundred and seventy-five thousand in the budget. So positively here, you started the year with a hundred and eighty-two thousand negative fund balance. This did bring you up to now a twenty-nine thousand dollar positive fund balance. So that's, uh, good news for the sewer fund. Uh, and I think that is the end. So let me stop sharing here. If anybody have any questions? Excellent. Anybody is always free to give me a call at any time. Uh, you know, feel free to, to follow up. And if not, I'll let you continue with your meeting.
Thank you, Donna Lee. Good to see you on the other side of the.
Thank you very much. Very good report. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Donna Lee. And Mayor, I'll go through these resolutions, which we discussed at the, uh, Village Forge workshop last week. Uh, the first one before you is a, uh, a simple resolution that we're consolidating a, a couple of purchase orders that were in the capital projects fund and moving them over to the sewer fund and, uh, uh, accounting for those in the sewer fund. If there's any money left from that, that purchase order, that, that will go back to the debt service fund because the balances are the result of debt that was issued.
Okay. So can I have a motion to approve?
Trustee Corrigan.
Can I get a second?
Trustee Salmon.
Second, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Yes, the next one is to rescind a resolution number two ninety-one of twenty twenty-one. And essentially what happened is as we were processed through the audit, we found a, an adjustment that should be made. Uh, this is going to transfer money back to the, um, the sewer fund from project, uh, twenty eighteen dash oh, oh, one, which is a sewer project. Uh, and we'll explain that a little bit later as we move to the following resolutions.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, second?
Second, trustee Hagan.
Second, trustee Hagan, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Michael?
Yes, the next resolution is, uh, related to the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. That's our ARPA money that we received from the US Treasury. Uh, they recently made a modification based on a lot of input from local, state and local governments. This was where we used to have to do a rather complicated formula to calculate what was known as lost revenue, revenue lost due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And that limited how much money we could spend of the ARPA money on general, uh, village, uh, uses like capital projects. They, a- as a result of the input from state, local governments, the, uh, US Treasury allows now a ten million dollar limit, but you have to adopt what is known as a standard allowance of, and so that's what this is for the board. So we won't have to do that calculation. Believe it or not, ten million dollars is the combined, is more than the combined total of all the local governments in New York State. So we're asking for that to be passed.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, second?
Hagan.
Trustee Hagan, discussion?
So is this, just to ask, uh, Mr. Janito, this has no effect on the amount that we're expecting from the ARPA funds in twenty twenty-two. This is just a difference in how it's accounted for. Is that correct?
Yes, it, it allows us to spend all the money we receive from ARPA in a way that it, you know, complies with any local government expenditure.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Michael?
Yes, the next one before you is when we adopted or passed the serial bonds in twenty twenty-one, we had a, uh, premium in there that we received of a little over thirty-eight thousand dollars. We also had an underwriter's discount that was taken out of the bond money, uh, for the payment of an underwriter of approximately thirty-four thousand dollars. Well, while we did the accounting for that, we never actually had in the budget, the amount for that appropriation of thirty-four thousand. So this amendment allows us to account for both the premium and the, uh, and the underwriters discount.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Trustee.
Trustee Corrigan, second?
Second, trustee Sal, Salmon.
Trustee, second trustee Salmon, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Michael?
Yes, uh, the next one is the, uh, the next one is for the, uh, real term energy proposal and, uh, asking that the mayor be authorized to sign a contract with Real Term Energy. Uh, this is for the LED street lighting project. And just as a real quick, uh, summary of it, there was a committee, uh, formed a couple of years ago, consisted of myself, Charles Wiki, as the superintendent of public works, Fred Rela, our grant writer and, uh, the then trustee, Charles Barone. And we went to seek out some quotes from people that did this. We did not do an RFP. However, we did seek out quotes from a few people that do it. This is a very limited number of firms that actually provide these type of services. So with that, we received a proposal from the New York Power Authority, one from Real Term Energy, another one from a firm named Clear World. And Orange and Rockland had suggested a proposal a couple of years ago on how they would replace the LED streetlights. In any event, after a review of all the proposals, it, it was the consensus of the committee that we accept the proposal from Real Term Energy. I'll also add that, uh, since the mayor took office, the mayor and the village clerk, Melissa Reamer, also took a look at the proposals and, uh, I believe they came to this, came, same conclusion that the committee had, that we go with the Real Term Energy proposal. So what it would be is basically they would come in and perform a number of services, which is in the proposal that I believe the entire board has a copy of. And, uh, following what they would do is help us negotiate buying the, uh, streetlights from Orange and Rockland. This is not the poles. It's just this, the streetlights themselves. Uh, negotiate with vendors and go out with their proper municipal bids for the actual, uh, parts and materials and labor. And then help to manage that project from beginning to end. Uh, one thing that's important to understand about Real Term Energy, they actually do all the work themselves. They do not subcontract it out like some of the other vendors do. And the project itself will have a payback period of approximately seven and a half years. Now, what that means is that every year, except for perhaps the first year, we'll have a positive cash flow based on the anticipated savings from LED streetlights, uh, compared to the amount that we'd have to raise with debt and paying, paying off the debt and the project itself. So, uh, that being said, and then once that payback period passes, of course, it's just pure savings for the village. It's estimated the savings will be somewhere in the area of about eighty-seven thousand dollars a year. So that's a very positive thing. The maintenance of the streetlights was another issue. Uh, years ago, it would have been up to the village to try to find a way to maintain streetlights. Obviously, we don't have the resources to do that. However, uh, we can get a third party to do it. And again, real term would help negotiate that contract for us. So if there's, uh, we are asking that the, uh, board adopt, uh, or accept the proposal from Real Term Energy and authorize the mayor to sign a contract that is, uh, obviously acceptable, uh, to the review and approval of the village attorney.
Thank you. Exactly what I was going to say.
Can I have a motion to approve the real term?
Trustee Salmon makes the motion.
Trustee Salmon?
To approve.
Second, please?
Trustee Hagan.
Trustee Hagan? Any discussion?
I didn't see your hand go up, Joe.
I waited for you, Frank.
Thank you.
I, I am very excited for, about this. I know, uh, Charles Barone, it was a very big passion for him. And, uh, he really did enjoy working on this committee and working with everyone. So I let Frank do the second, but my heart's in it wholeheartedly.
Good. All right. So, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carry. Michael?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the, the next resolution relates to that, uh, one of the early ones I mentioned. And this is with the money that was being moved, uh, again, from the, uh, sewer project to the sewer fund. And it has to do with the fact that nineteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and change, uh, was, should be accounted for as a reduction of state aid. It's really simply an accounting procedure to make that adjustment and adjust the project budget to reflect the actual, uh, results of the, uh, sale of the bonds.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, second?
Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carry. Michael?
Yes, the last resolution before you is a resolution to, um, authorize the amendment of the budget to include a seventy-five hundred dollar uh, budgeted amount for estimated, uh, being a grant from the Rockland County, uh, Stormwater Consortium. And that that grant would then be also offset by an expenditure for services related to the consortium's work on the, uh, on, on the stormwater systems. It, it, this does not select who that vendor would be. It just simply amends the budget. So at such a time that we decide to go ahead and accept the grant and, and then, uh, fund it with, with the, with the work that's needed.
Can I have a motion, please, to approve?
Motion by trustee Salmon.
Second?
Trustee Corrigan.
So second, trust, second is by trustee Corrigan, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Hey, Mike.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You know, hey, thank you. But stay on in case, in case you're for something, okay?
I'll be hiding.
Don't go anywhere.
Thanks, Michael.
I'll be right.
Time for the, uh, trustees update, please? Anybody has anything they want to talk about or say or bring up?
Can I say something before? I just, I just want to say again.
It's already closed. I'm too late. It took too long, Frank.
Thank you. Is that a three-minute rule? I thought that was for picking up food, but listen, that was a great weekend and, and everyone that was there at the winter festival. I can't say thanks enough. I just, I think it was fantastic. Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Everybody that participated.
Yep. I feel the same way. It was started by you, Michael, and everybody worked so hard and made it such a success. Nine thousand dollars for people was really fantastic on everybody's part to, to get that.
I, I appreciate that. I, I, I plan on going in that direction more with this village as a team. I think that's what this village is, is thirsty for. Um, we have a very caring village where people want to get involved and want to, want to get together. And, uh, Fred, I noticed you were a, a, a good photographer yourself, but I was, I was, I liked the, the young lady more reading it, it'd be better than you. I have to tell you that, Fred.
Okay, thank you. I didn't think, I didn't think anybody was going to come. I had to spend fifteen, twenty minutes de, de-icing my car and taking, you know, scraping off the ice. I thought it was going to be a failure, but quite the opposite.
It's a winter festival. It's supposed to be cold.
But this was the worst, this was the worst day of the winter with all the ice.
Actually, last Saturday would have been worse.
Right.
So by moving it, not knowing what we were having, it, it was just an ama, it's, Kathy put it in perfect words, it was truly a shining moment and I, I just, I love the idea and, you know, Mayor, keep coming on with them, because we want more.
I had, I had the right team to do it, the trustees and, and the employees there. And I gotta, even Joe Hunt, I gotta compliment Joe Hunt. He was very helpful to me through this whole thing, you know, at last, you know, trying to get their work done. And we, we keep on having storms. you know, trying to get their work done. And we, we keep on having storms and ice storms. So it's been a, it's been a little hectic, you know, with COVID and everything, but I, I got good people behind me and I'm, and I'm proud to work with them.
But everybody had a smile on their face from whoever had to deal with moving bouncy houses and ice sculptures. And everybody was just, it, it was a really great day.
The only, only, but there was one complaint, and I hope it doesn't happen next year. Frank Hagan and Fred Salman wouldn't get off the ponies and the kids were very upset.
I did have to say, I was having a little problem because they kept wanting to go and cutting off the kids, but that's okay.
You're right. I love those ponies.
Can I go on to my, I want to my update now. My update has to do with, I sat down with people who were buying the, the old quarry, okay? It may be known or may not be known, but they, they had come to this village approximately two years ago, but they left the village of trustees out in those conversations. You weren't, you, you weren't, they just, I'll say it straight out, they were, they hid it from the board. They never should have been hit from the board. You have a right to know everything that I know. But let's just have a personal dangerous nature of someone that I'm, you know, I have a right not to tell you. But what they're trying to do now is they're, what they want to do is they, they bought the property, fund the town around the Pope, and they want to put a, a building in there, right? They, they have two different concepts so far, and they're gonna come to us all. They just wanted to just break ground and talk to me. And I, I let them know my feeling that you guys didn't know about it, you didn't know about the old Mill Road around Pope was, was taking that and how you had a right to know. But the project has to do with them being able to, what access points and exit points they can, they can get to this project. That, for that to happen, if, if they can't get other access points, and, and the village of Montebello is gonna have to work in with this also. If they can't get that, that proper access, the, the, the project will become a much smaller project, approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand square, square feet. If they get that access, the project could become anywhere from a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet to seven hundred thousand square feet. But more practical, five hundred thousand square feet. They, they seem to represent, you know, and Terry Rice was with me at, at this meeting also, they seem to represent that they can fill in the, a, a part of the, you know, part of where all the water is, the big hole, you might say. But that's, that's, that's yet to be determined. I, I see this project as a little more complex than the actual Navartis property site, which Brookfield is, is looking at. And they're going to send me some information, which I will send on to everyone to, just to keep us alert. And a lot of this issue will not be, you know, as I stand, they will not be, need board approval, but it'll be more like, well, of course, the building department, the, the planning board and, and the zoning board, right? But, you know, it could, it could come back to us at some point. So we're always open to ratables. I am anyway, I speak for myself, and I, I think I'm, I'm speaking for the board. If they, if they respect our traffic and our flooding problems and they, they concur with our neighborhoods. I will know more within probably in a few days, I will send you on, just so you have an understanding of the project. They have not made any application yet. No one has, right? But they, I, I explained to them, this is a fresh new project to us because nobody told us. Even though there were people in this village that knew about it, the board members didn't know about it. And I don't, that doesn't make any sense to me, and that will not happen under my administration. The other thing that happened the other night in the Ramapo Cirque, there was a, as I told these trustees, there was a, there was someone doing construction on a wall, and some of that wall came down with that weather. I had the building department that contacted me and the attorneys that contacted me. I had got, you know, gotten to the site, and I had to get the Red Cross in and relocate residents into the Crown Plaza Hotel for the, for their safety. But we're always here to do that. I kept the, the trustees informed, they kept the communication lead the whole time. And we're doing what we're supposed to do, to take care of our, our, our residents, our neighborhoods, and our friends.
Mike, I just want to check something. Ramapo Cirque is, is in our village, not the village of Montebello?
It's in our village.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's right across from the junior high.
Okay.
So even if it wasn't our village, I helped them anyway, Frank.
Very nice of you, Mike.
All right, so we, like I said, Joe in our building department was, was, was fantastic. Rob Magrino, Terry Rice was right on the line. They're all, all there to help us and assist, and then the Suffering Police Department as well. Okay, that's, that, just one more thing. I, I want to see if I can get online them. The, the, they couldn't get online during the thing. Bruce Simon, can, Bruce Simon, are you there? Can you talk? He went to about Battery Saturday or something. You want to jump on?
Mayor, the Bruce, Bruce is on, and I think Melissa's going to make him a co-host.
Bruce is in the house.
I'm here.
Okay.
Yay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, board. Just very briefly, not just Battery Saturday. It has been a success for us the past few years. We intended to be bigger and better. It is coming March twelfth, Saturday, March twelfth, in the parking lot in Village Hall from ten A to one P. As always, we will be accepting batteries, such as its name, not just Battery Saturday. TVs and electronics, household appliances, old light bulbs, paint, and medications. No sharps, please. No needles, nothing like that.
Yeah.
Um, we have, we have taken tons and tons of material out of the waste stream, things that would normally go in the garbage that should not go in the garbage, that should be properly dealt with. And that's why we do it. The biggest thing is that I want to thank the board, obviously, and I always want to thank my brothers in the CSEA, our DPW staff who've come out, who volunteered their time. They don't get paid, we don't get paid, but they are so kind and generous to show up and give us their hard work. Because trust me, we can't lift half the stuff that comes in. Those days are over for me, but these gentlemen do what we can. So again, I want to thank them. I want to thank you. The only thing I need from the village besides the use of the driveway is the ability to have a couple of trucks to take everything back at the end at one o'clock when we're done collecting. It's never been a problem before. I hope it won't be now. And that's it. Oh, one last thing. Cash donations for people who drop off or graciously donated, no dollar amount set, whatever people want to give. Your generosity is greatly appreciated. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Bruce, Bruce is still there?
I'm here, Mayor.
I definitely want to say, you're getting a little too close to St. Patrick's Day. Be careful what day you pick next year. I like, okay?
Bruce, what's the start time?
Ten AM.
Okay, ten to one.
And, and. Ten to one.
And Bruce, is, this is all weather, no matter, you know, even if it's.
All weather, rain or shine. Don't put the jinx on us, Steve.
Yeah, I'm not putting any jinx. I'm just double checking if there's a rain date or anything like that.
My Sicilian grandfather would say, don't put the Malocchio on me.
Terry, should I make a motion for that, Terry? Terry?
I'm sorry, I was trying to get the unmuted there. Yeah, yeah, I think a motion would be appropriate, yes.
Okay, I, I, I'd like to make a most, have a motion to approve the Battery Day and the other events that Bruce Simon just talked about.
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Trustee, trust me, second, please? Trustee Corrigan, second? All, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much, Bruce. It means a lot to all of us.
Yeah.
Thank you all. Your support means the world to us. Have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the January third, twenty, two thousand twenty-two board of trustees meeting minutes. Can I get a motion for that, please?
Trustee Salman moves such a lot.
Motion, second?
Trustee Hagan.
Trustee Hagan, second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I don't have anything for executive session in case anyone else. Does anyone have any executive session issues they'd like to discuss? No? Okay, then I think we'll make a motion to close the, close the meeting. I get a motion?
Trustee Corrigan.
And I second.
Trustee Salman seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Have a great day, guys. Have a great day, have a great night. Enjoy.
Everybody stay safe and be careful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.